Good evening, everybody. It's seven o'clock, so I'm going to call the meeting to order and we have a quorum. We may have one or two board members joining us online. But let's start out with Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there anybody who is interested or signed up to speak in public comment or anybody online? Okay. Hearing or seeing none, we'll move right into Budget Workshop number two. And I just want to remind folks that we are required by the town charter to hand the budget off to the Board of Finance in the town by the 15th of March. So that's why we have possible action tonight on the agenda. Because if we feel comfortable with today's presentation and discussion, we could take action tonight. Ideally, it would be good if we took action tonight because it's very difficult for staff to print a budget book and get it to the town without much notice. But if there is that, the other thing that we could do is is approve it as is with a caveat for any changes. And we'll hear more about that during the discussion, particularly around the health benefits. So we do have a meeting next Wednesday, a regular board meeting next Wednesday. But that is really too late to do anything with the budget book, aside from adding a page to it or something like that. Okay? Just want folks to keep in mind that this is hopefully a night when we could take action. If not, we could also have a special meeting, but we need to notice it properly. And that's a whole issue, too. So I'm going to hand it over to you, Neil, I assume, to do the follow-up. Oh, Katina? Okay. I don't see her online, but I just want to note that Deaneesi is online. And Ilda told me she was going to join, too. Hopefully, she will. They just turn off their video. They're not showing us their picture. Yeah. But I, see, there she is. When we vote, we can, it would be nice if we could get that bar taken off the top of the screen. Welcome, Deaneesi. Glad you're here with us. So Neil, it's over to you.
Thank you and good evening. So tonight is our Budget Workshop two. How we decided to put this presentation together was a combination of a summary of the first workshop to explain how we got where we are now and talk about a couple of things that have occurred between February 19th and today. And then hopefully be able to facilitate any discussion or conversation or respond to any questions you have so that you, as a board, can potentially make a recommendation tonight or give me some guidance of next steps to provide you the information you need. So, next slide, please. So as I was just saying, so basically, the objectives are to review those major points, update you as a board of education on any changes. I'm going to give you an overview about some information the board may not be aware about, something called the municipal revenue sharing grant, and just give you some context, what we've learned in the last couple of weeks about it. Provide an update on legislation regarding the $40 million to support special education. We might actually have an update of that update tonight and provide you an insurance estimate update as well. And just any questions you have about this presentation or anything about the budget book, try my best to respond to them. So this is a slide that actually was shared on February 19th. I thought it was a great starting point. And it's in your budget book on page 45. If you want it clear, it's hard to put it on the slide, obviously. But this was to show you that on February 19th and in the budget book, my acting superintendent recommended budget is a 6.41% increase over the previous fiscal year. As some of you know, this was what we discussed at a previous finance and audit discussion. And so that's where we came. On page 45, it's located, and we call them the big buckets or major categories of the budget. One thing that I pointed out that, you know, and this changed a little bit since then, but the employee salaries and benefits totaled 71.5% of the budget. And we just want to point that out, that it is a major driver of our general budget. And then just this came up, when you look at the numbers and you look at the equipment line and say, wow, that's a huge increase. It's important to note that there was an accounting standard change made known to us. And as a result, Rita, in doing all her preparation, had to move things into equipment. But you'll notice there's an equal deduction in contracted services and purchase services. So that's where it comes from. So there's actually not that large increase. It can be explained through accounting. But in case that raises any questions or anyone that sees this budget book reaches out to all of you, you can at least explain that. Next slide, please. So the major cost drivers we talked about, I simplified these. I had a few more last time, but these are the ones that have the most cost attached to them. So I thought the most influence on our actual budget. So the first being, we have approximately $2 million less in grant revenue year over year from last year. And the year before that, we actually had 2.8 million less in grant revenue than the year before. So that is a two-year difference of $4.8 million. Or in terms of general fund, about 10% of our budget. Just to keep that in context, when we're trying to present this out to the public and also when we're trying to explain some of our other increases, we're dealing with that decrease while we're trying to manage contractual and increases that are beyond our control. The second major cost driver was the reduction of the excess cost grant reimbursement that was decreased mid-year from 71% to 64%. I'll have a little more on that later. Then we had a net, in the budget, as we explained, there was a net reduction of 12.8 positions from the previous budget. This was due to mostly the closing of Wyndham Center School and where there were vacancies and opportunities to reduce the budget due to enrollment decreases. So we felt comfortable with those. But we did not go beyond that. And just because Wyndham Center was closing, we didn't arbitrarily close all of those positions, as you can see, obviously, because we needed them to support the fifth grade at the middle school or support the needs of our students in other elementary schools. I put in bold that we revised the 13.2 positions. This was just during this timeframe. There was a reduction of one teacher who was being reduced from 1 FTE to .6, actually, by request. And it actually had no, or minimal to no impact on actual enrollment and offerings. And it was actually at the request of the staff member. So just as you can tell, it's a .4 change. But I wanted to at least note that that now is in our projections. We have increases to certified salaries and non-certified salaries. And a lot of that has to do with the fact we lost Esser. We had an alliance shortfall, as you know, about $500,000. And we have projected contractual increases that, quite frankly, I think are competitive and well-observed for our staff. But that is a driver in our budget. We have an increase to employee benefits due to the projected insurance cost increases and the loss of carryover from the previous year. $500,000 of our carryover was put into benefits specifically to help us. And now we have to, it's affecting the increase this year. Next slide, please. So the closing of Wyndham Center School obviously has an impact on our budget. The special education needs and costs, including staffing, continues to be a major cost driver. We talked about that for a little bit last time, but obviously, that impacts. Our transportation is an 8.2% increase. And the reason for that is the East Con transportation rate hike, again, something that happened mid-year. And then a significant increase in homeless transportation costs are, unfortunately and sadly, the number of students in our McKinny Vento is increasing. And as a result, the transportation costs associated with that go up. And we proudly support them and believe in the McKinny Vento, but that does have costs associated with it. Expenditures related to staff absences, and I just want to stress this. When we talk about staff absences and the costs, we're not saying that judgmentally. We're just saying descriptively that has costs attached to it. And I mentioned that last time.
Neil, just a question on the transportation increase. It was 8.2% this year. Have we got an indication what it's going to be next year?
Actually, the 8.2% increase is what we project for next year. That actually includes the rate hike that had occurred this year and the increase in homeless transportation costs. It's impacting us this year, but also this is projecting out next year.
So we don't have an actual number from East Con? Yet it still could go up, which is...
It potentially could go up for next year. That is quite right.
Thanks.
And that transportation rate hike is specifically for East Con specialized transportation. Not, the majority of our transportation of our students is through M&amp;J.
Mary had a question.
Yes. Did you discuss how much the closing of Wyndham Center School will cost? And also the various moves to different schools and, including the middle school? And also, I believe there's 65 more kindergarten students. I don't know if you discussed that last time because of the bump that we...
Yes. So in the, I don't know if we actually explicitly said it. That's a great question. So I'll go backwards. I'll do the kindergarten, then I'll hit the staffing for Wyndham Center and Wyndham Middle School. So we are recently talking about this at our ad hoc elementary committee that in the projections, we wanted to make sure there was a decrease this year due to the kindergarten legislation. We have about 60-plus students, fewer. Next year, we imagine that will go back to the normal, like the normal, not normal, but like the, what the enrollment counts have been over the past several years. It'll be closer to that. So what we did is we know that now that's going to have a cascading effect in staffing. So for next year, we brought back those kindergarten positions, but there'll be a reduction of grade one because that will be the lower grade, the lower enrollment amount. And that will happen over the next couple of years. But we did, in our budget, add kindergarten para-support positions because we have kindergarten pairs in each of our kindergarten classrooms. And they were in this year, but they, we did add them. They were added in those staffing projections. When we talk about Wyndham Center, what we did specifically there is obviously, all the classrooms have students in them. So we didn't reduce classrooms. Any classroom reductions that happen are always due to a reduction in enrollment. So we basically took those classrooms and moved them. The kindergarten through grade three are going to North Wyndham. The grade four classrooms will be going to Sweeney. And then obviously, all the fifth grade classrooms, the same number that we have now, will be going to Wyndham Middle. And a couple of places where reductions did exist, that was in terms of the number of specials. But all of those staffing members actually have already or are in the process of being assigned places. There's places for all those individuals. Two are going to a different elementary school and two will be going to the middle schoo- oh, actually, potentially, three could be going to elementary schools and one going to the middle school. It depends on vacancies. And then, to Mary's question, in terms of staff, we don't have an exact number at this time of the staffing impact, how much we're saving in staffing, because that number's changing a little and we're looking at vacancies. And I will be eventually able to get you that exact number. I know that in utilities, we did save, I believe, $112,000 in utility savings by the closing of the school. And then there are several positions, but I will work on giving you a more definitive number. And there's some evolution of that because we're trying to make sure all of the adults that exist still have a position in the district next year. But thank you for your question.
Mary? But I thought I heard you ask about the cost related to the closing. Yes, which is a little different than the savings.
Oh, I think I misunderstood you, and my apologies.
And is that correct, what you wanted the answer to?
So I hope you like the answer to that question that you didn't ask. But so in terms of the cost, so in terms of any furniture, in terms of the middle school, that was discussed at other meetings. And we did that through some use of capital improvement. We are, we feel comfortable within our facilities. We'll be able to handle any sort of moving of materials. So those costs have already been captured and have not been added into this budget. We feel like we're in good position. Thank you. That's a really good question to ask.
Anybody else have any questions at this point or comments before Neil moves along? Okay, thanks. Go ahead.
Next slide, please. Oh, here we go. Go back one, please. There you go. Thank you. So this was a vote that took place on the 19th. This was where our budget decreased from 6.41 to 5.95. The reason for that was simply we found a calculation in our projection of magnet school and vocational agricultural tuition costs that it was less. That was the only reason, and we recommended that it was comfortable to make that change. It wouldn't affect our programming at all. And then there was a vote made by the Board of Education to reduce our ask to 5.95%. Next slide, please. And then, just to keep everyone in the loop, and this is what we'll talk about in a second, the possible increased carryover of Medicaid in IDEA Part B and Title I. If there's opportunities to move any more of that money for next year to help reduce our ask, we are looking for that. We are not permanently filling positions that become vacant. Instead, we will use, obviously, we won't have vacant classrooms. We will use long-term subs and available staff. And again, like I said last time, there are some exceptions to this. For example, our specialized programs, I will not reject any of those entries. Those, obviously, like RISE or Autism Program or STRIDE, we will fill those immediately. And there's no questions asked on that. Continue, we're going to continue to examine actual expenses compared to projected expenditures. And we're looking, and we haven't decided to do this, but if we get closer and we have available funds that could be used for next year or help reduce or minimize or eliminate the chance for layoffs, we always have the opportunity to explore a budget freeze. And it wouldn't be, could be part or all of the budget. I'm just throwing that out there as an option for the future. We have not done that yet. Just, again, considerations. So in a second, I'll explain how we got to lowering that 5.95. Again, just by a smidge there to 5.8. And again, we'll explain that, I believe, in a future slide. But that's going to be the future request I'm making tonight for you to consider. Three things we mentioned last time is the magnet school grant has yet to be awarded. So that can impact what we're asking, but we can't, we can't tell you what because it hasn't been awarded yet. The insurance estimates, I'm going to save that for a future slide. I'm talking specific about that. And the legislative updates regarding supportive special ed costs, I'm going to actually talk about that in another slide, too. But we mentioned that last time. Next slide. Oh, go ahead.
Is this on another slide, the magnet school grant to be awarded? Or can you fill us in on when you think it will be awarded? Or do we have no idea?
I don't know. I'll let Rita answer. Maybe she's going to, I think, we don't know, but yeah.
Unfortunately, we said, I think, on the February 19th, it would be sometime in March. But when I looked at last year's award letter, we didn't receive it till end of April, almost May. And the reason it's an issue this year is because of the cap on magnet school tuition. So our grant is supposed to increase, and they have a new calculation. So I've been trying to, you know, get ahold of them to see what it's going to be. But if that increases, it will have an impact on next year, obviously, because we can plan for that increase. Does that make sense? But unfortunately, it doesn't get to us until like April.
And it sort of doesn't make sense to me because it's so wacky. But you said, I thought I heard you say, Rita, that you've been trying to find out what the amount might be.
Because they have this new calculation, so I'm still...
Can we possibly get some help from our legislators to put pressure on them to get an answer for you?
That's a good question.
I mean, a lot of times legislators' offices can get answers out of departments faster than the rest of us. I, just a thought.
Yeah.
I just want to put it out there.
Make that communication, sure.
Right.
The least we can do is ask.
It can't hurt to at least find out what the dollar amount is.
Right. We could say, yes, thank you. That's a great suggestion.
We're not asking to get the letter sooner than anybody else. But they must know the dollar amount of the formula has been refigured.
You would hope so. That's a great suggestion. Thank you. We'll take it.
Mark has a point on that?
So even if we get that number, we are, what we're looking at is income to offset the taxpayer's cost of the increase. We're not looking to reduce the increase. The increase will still be, if we pass this 5.8, no matter what I get from this middle school grant. Is that correct?
Well, what we get from this magnet school grant can impact that 5.8 because the majority of that grant is salaries for barrows.
So we would switch, okay, so it will affect, could affect the act.
It could, yes.
Ultimately, that would be your decision because we'll have already, that will actually be your decision because we'll already have a board-approved budget by the time they decide how we want to proceed. So that's a conversation, I believe. That is one outcome, sure.
Well, I would just like, like, this isn't an action item per se, but I would like to offer to help, see if we can get an answer.
We'll definitely work on it.
Okay.
Rita and I have become great letter-writing partners to our government officials over the past couple of months.
Well, this is more like just a phone call.
Yeah, right. Sure. Thank you. All right. I believe, next slide, please. Okay. So this was what we were talking about. And again, I tried to keep putting each step. So this is the proposed that I'm speaking about tonight. If we're currently at 5.95, the only difference in this is that there's a small reduction in staffing, and that was because of that .4 position. That is, again, the only deduction here. So I don't know if anyone has any questions on that, but that's what I will be, that's what I am recommending that we move forward with at the end of tonight. And with intention, I'm not making any recommendations or large deductions because that finance and audit discussion we had a few weeks ago, I really felt like what I tried to do is encapsulate that into the recommendation. Okay, next slide.
I have another question for you.
Go ahead, Mark.
Okay. Number 11, operations and maintenance of buildings. I see that went down, which I assume is the reduction from Wyndham Center. Have we planned any contingencies for increased costs because of the newness of this building? We always seem to have increased costs because of operation when you want to move into a new facility at the high school.
So I will, I know we did project in other buildings increased utilities. I'll have to get back to you with specifics. But I know that we did project in all the other sites increased costs and utilities.
Yeah. I was just wondering if we've got...
It's a great question.
There always seems to be things that pop up with a brand-new facility that it ends up costing us more than we thought it would because of the HVAC system didn't work or the solar system hasn't been re-hooked up yet or things of that nature.
Yeah, I agree.
So, Mark, you're not talking about utility costs. You're talking about operating the systems.
Well, also because we expected to recoup a certain amount of monies from these solar panels that we have all around. But up till, they may or may, correct me if I'm wrong, they may or may not be operating yet, even yet. Are they fully operational now?
I know that, I know exactly what you're talking about. And I'm not sure if they're fully operational yet, but there was conversation about, it took them longer to get started than originally...
So just, if we anticipated maybe a problem with that down the line, that's all I'm asking is contingency.
Thank you. I'll give you an answer. I can have it for the next board meeting. We'll investigate. Thank you.
But I think the point that Mark's making is it's, that would be too late because we would have already decided on a budget.
That's...
I mean, I don't want to increase the ask, but I just want to make sure that we're... I mean, I don't want to increase the ask, but I just want to make sure that we've given some forethought to, you know, the potential.
Okay. Thank you. The assumptions, these were the same as last time. The only thing we did different than actually the finance and audit discussion before Budget Workshop One is we added the staff benefit reduction that we included and talked about last time. But these are the assumptions that are affecting our budget. Next slide, please. One thing I wanted to take a moment and just discuss, this wasn't shared last time, is, and again, I'm saying this descriptively, but this is really important. Our salaries and benefits that we've tried our best to make more competitive, and there has been impact in that, and that while we still have, you know, a higher-than-desired turnover rate or lack of retention rate, our retention rate has been improving as we have been increasing our salaries and packages to our staff over the last several years. But when you look at categories one through three, which are certified salaries or non-certified salaries and those benefits, it represents an approximate 7% increase. And just to show that we've really been trying to be, keep that in mind, and that is important to us, categories four through 14 actually represent a 1% decrease of the 24-25 budget and all the other categories. I just wanted, I thought it was worth just pointing that out. This is the slide we showed last time of the proposed reductions in staffing. This is the same except the WFT line was increased, as I mentioned last time, was the only bargaining unit that actually increased. And this increased by two, originally it was 2.4. And last time, we talked extensively about some of the positions that were added after the budget passed last year to meet the needs of our special education students, meaning RISE classes or just IEPs. So regardless of this budget, as Lynn so eloquently pointed out at the last workshop, is those are required by law, and we're going to hire the necessary staff to service our students. So that's why there is an increase there because some of those positions in that bargaining unit were because of that very reason. Next slide, please. So, and I know this is actually Part B of the discussion, and I could table this or just keep going. But last time, these were the recommended capital improvements that I shared. Nothing here has changed. I made sure, thanks to Board Member Doyle's comment about the reading body. We have capitalized reading or reading, so that has been taken care of. But the media center upgrades, the facilities truck, the heating and cooling rooftop, and the pavers on the walkway, as well as the existing decaying sewage pump pit of all are the same as they were last time. Yeah, and just one last thing, because this did come up last time, and I thought Brendan made a good point, is people are talking about consolidation. So they're like, why do we need that at North Wyndham? The truth is, no matter how quickly we build a building, the current equipment will deteriorate and not be able to function. So this is something we need, and that's really the end of the story. Okay, so I wanted to just really talk, this is something the full board may not be aware of yet, and I just wanted to share, share with you this. This is an excerpt that was sent in emails, and our town was no different, from the Connecticut State Department of Policy and Management to municipalities. There is a municipal revenue sharing, municipal revenue sharing grant. And in the grant, basically, towns receive a certain amount of money. So what they were making people aware of is that if a budget is over 2.5% or more than the rate of inflation, which happened to be 3.31%, there was a penalty on what towns would receive from this grant. So we received some information from the town, and then I know that Rita is on Casbo. Different business officers were talking about this very topic and what it meant, and it was generating some conversation. So Rita and I talked to Attorney for Shipman and Goodwin and tried to get an explanation. And on the next slide, the two things we learned were, one, the amount of our increased special education costs, and Rita's working on getting us an actual number, actually can be reduced from the budget ask to begin with. So if we, I'll hypothetically say, if you went forward with 5.8%, anything that's increased in our special education costs will be decreased from that amount. And the second really more important thing is the lawyer we talked to is people are getting excited about this, but the grant has actually been in existence for seven years and was paid out once. It's likely that it won't even be paid to the towns. So there, I don't know how to say much to do about nothing potentially, but that was the impression that our attorney was giving us. So I just wanted to share that with you. I don't know if it'll come out in conversations with the Board of Finance, but we wanted to do that research, and I'm just sharing what our attorney shared with us. And I think Rita summarized it correctly, I hope.
I'm glad you got it clarified from somebody who actually knows what they're talking about when it comes to this. Because when I first saw that email that we had been sent by the town, I was like freaked out. You know, the slide previous to this that you showed, yeah. So I still don't understand bullet number one. Yeah, I don't understand what that means.
So whatever we, in the statute, basically, it's, they were talking about in the statute, whatever you're raising your budget by, if it exceeds the inflation rate or the 2.5 rate, whatever's higher, the towns could be penalized. But that budget ask actually isn't the actual number. It's your budget ask minus the cost of any increased special education cost your budget has. I hope that I, okay, I know. Just in full disclosure, we had some wordsmithing conversation on that very sentence.
That could be wordsmithed better if we're going to be showing it to, like, Board of Finance or the public. I think we should word it in a way that's more understandable. That's all.
Thank you for that feedback. Thank you.
Because it didn't make any sense.
Sure.
To me. Maybe other people on the board understood it, but I don't think. I think you could say, like, they, you know, the, well, I'm not going to wordsmith it now, but I can give you a suggestion.
All right, sounds good. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Another question, Lynn. So if this has only been paid out once after, over, one after seven years, can we document that we haven't received this money? So when the Board of Finance starts beating us up for it, and we said, well, we've never gotten this money anyway. So we have.
So yeah, that would be a question we'd have to ask the town. How often have they received it? Because I think it goes to them. So that would be something we'd have to ask that, we could ask them. How often have you received the grant?
We didn't get it, is what you're saying.
Right. It doesn't come to us.
Okay.
It's money to the town.
All right.
But the town is somehow under this rule, this ridiculous rule, being penalized.
Yeah, so what I'm saying is that we found out our attorney's has only been paid out once over seven years. So I just want to be able to make the point to the town that they're worrying much ado about nothing because it hasn't been paid out.
Right. We should probably, I could see somebody bringing this up, right, in the budget discussions.
I would anticipate it based on the way I communicate.
We should get a definitive answer about if it has been paid out once in seven years, when was that?
That's good. I don't know the answer to that yet, but we'll work on it.
Okay, like.
Go ahead, Katina.
Yeah, like, my mind is all confused. Can you hear me now? Okay, so there is this rule at the, in general statute in the government, and they send this grant to towns, but penalize the town if the town needs more money than the, you know, increase necessary. And they have paid it only once in seven years to the Wyndham Town or to the entire Connecticut.
According to our attorney, it sounded like it had only been dispersed across the state one time.
So this is like a fake thread? I'm like, I cannot understand even why we receive this.
So the purpose of me sharing.
Budget police at the state level are just trying to make us all panic.
Yeah.
Right. I just felt, yeah, and I'm not trying, my intention is not to scare this group. My intention is, as we became aware of it, to inform the board and let you know that we're researching this, and we don't perceive it is what, like, it may look initially when you read it. And to our board chair's point, our attorney that originally that we reached out to, that we normally work with, deferred it to someone more specialized in this sort of law. And the response was she was worried initially, and he was like, no, you don't need to be worried about this, was generally what he shared with us.
Maybe it would be easier to get the answer about what year that money was paid out in seven years, but from our attorney.
I actually think that's going to be an email we send after this. Thank you.
As a citizen, I want to know where did the money was put or held or used the other six years, right? Because if it was not dispersed, but it was part of the, of the plan of the governmental budget, what a crazy thing.
Well, it's the wacky way the state does its work. I mean, they make, they pass things and then they don't pay us for them. That's not unusual.
Next slide, please. So the other topic that we did talk about last time was special education funding. Obviously, we have increased special education costs. There were several things we talked about, but I'm going to specifically focus on the excess cost grant reimbursements. Last week, I don't know if it happened during the Budget Workshop or right before, but the state and House, Senate actually voted to award $40 million to districts for special ed education funding. When we looked at how it was, everything was laid out, our interpretation was our district would receive $144,000 this year towards excess cost grant reimbursement. And then there was going to be a veto by the governor, and I think he did veto it. But then since then, and I don't know if our board chair wants to share, she was reading about something that happened today as we were presenting this.
Yeah, so the governor vetoed it, and the House and Senate would have had to do a two-third vote, majority vote to override the governor's veto, which they were considering whether or not they would do. And then the governor got back from his overseas trip and sat down with leaders from the legislature and negotiated a way to pay for that $40 million in this budget year. He was going to veto it because he said it was bad budgeting, you know, to have a budget and then decide you're just going to go outside of it mid-year. And so he, they agreed that the money would be, that $40 million could be taken from interest on unspent ARPA money or something of that sort. And so it would be not taken out of the general fund. They agreed on that, and the House overwhelmingly voted today to pass the $40 million special funding. And they've sent it to the Senate, and the Senate, I'm assuming, because they voted on it once already, will vote on it again. So there is a chance that we could get money this budget year to help. But we don't know for sure until the Senate passes it. But if the Senate passes it, I would assume since the governor negotiated the deal, he'll sign it.
I hope so. And this would be applied to this year, but again, this is one of those three topics. We want to make you aware of it, and we thought the Budget Workshop was the best time to do that. And then our last slide, before I open it up to hear questions and comments from you, is our insurance estimates. So as you know, or in case you don't know, our budget included the idea we would be moving to the state partnership plan in sort of our financial estimations, our projections. However, there's a few things I just want to point out. First, the revised state plan insurance estimates will be posted, of course, perfect timing, on Friday, March 7th, which is two days from now. That's how it works. And then, just so everyone knows, and we're not on the estimated to use Lockton again in our projections, Lockton's estimates, we went to the meeting, Rita and I, recently, I think last week or right after the, yeah, that's right, a couple of days or the day after the Budget Workshop One. The estimates actually increased from 9.7 to 11.9. So that's Lockton's increase, so we're going to wait to see what the state partnership plan does. But just so everyone knows, the state partnership plan, as well as any potential impact it could have on this budget, will be on the agenda as a discussion, a possible action item, because we actually haven't officially had a sort of vote or discussion. Although there's been plenty of discussion on the state partnership plan. Just, we're going to have that part of our board meeting on March 12th.
So to be, just to clarify, though, since we had asked you to put together a budget that assumes that we're going into the state partnership plan, the percentage we were, that's in the budget now is 9%?
It is a 9% increase, so it'll, what happens Friday could impact our budget either way. Up or down, right. We do not know.
So we'll find out after Friday and have it up for discussion on next Wednesday. And the thought is, if there's a big, if there's a difference, if what we hear on Friday is not 9%, what if it's 9.5% or 8.6% or 10.9%? We may need to make an adjustment to our budget that we adopt, have already adopted, and put an addendum page in the budget that gets handed off to the town. That's what we're thinking.
Yes, that's exactly what we're thinking. And I imagine on Friday, since this is March, you know, we hear about March Madness, and people like to refresh their page for basketball scores. I imagine Rita will be refreshing some page with, waiting for this estimate to come out. That's what I predict. And I'm not far off, I bet.
So, Lynn, I was, I was with you on that phone call from Lockton. As I recall, they anticipated between 9/7 and 11/9, based upon our most recent experience through February. But they also recommended, they were discussing recommending that, using a 10.5 increase, not going up to the 11/9, as I recall.
They actually sent me an email. They're recommending a 10% increase on the rates. That doesn't change what we put in the budget.
Right.
The rates that we charge employees. So I'm, although I haven't responded to them because if on Friday, the state partnership plan comes in at a 9%, you know, then we'll discuss. I haven't given them an answer about what we would use for the rates for the employees. They wanted to do a 10%.
And the only other thing that comes to my mind is, we're talking a 9% increase in the state plan.
Right.
But we don't know what that increase is. We haven't talked to actual numbers. I don't know if that's $10 million plus 9% or if that's $8 million plus 9%. We don't know, we have never talked the actual numbers of the state plan that I'm aware of.
No, I took, what I took was the state rates, added a 9%, and that's what's in our budget.
You took, so you do know the actual state rates?
Yes, exactly. Brown and Brown, the.
All right, I wasn't aware that we knew the actual state rates at the.
The actual current state rates, correct.
Yeah, so that's what I was trying to clarify, Mark, that what's in the budget now is the state plan at the percentage that, 9%.
Yeah, the current rates plus the 9%.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And so that's why we may need to make an adjustment next week. But it would be too late for the budget book that's being printed. So it would be like a one-page insert that would update the budget book. Does that make sense to folks? Okay.
Next slide. So in a second, I will open it to questions and comments. I just want to thank my interim team for putting together this presentation and all the work they went into it, especially Rita, who, we've been working on this for months now to make sure we have all the information. And I really, one of the intents that I had was to take your thoughts from the finance and audit discussion and the first budget workshop and make sure that we, I provided you as much information to make. and make sure that we, I provided you as much information to make the most informed decisions about what you decide to do. So I'm open to any comments or questions you have. And, and thank you.
Katina, did you have a question or comment?
Well, thank you guys to start with. But in, on page 15, it says that, that Wyndham might receive $144,000 from those 40 million. I'm just curious about how is, how is that figured? How did you come up with that 144,000?
There's some documentation in the excess cost reimbursement that lays out what our reimbursement would be. And that's how we, we calculate the number. It's sort of spelled out in one of the charts.
But that doesn't, that, that's for this year. It doesn't affect the budget book.
It's for 24, 25, correct. Thank you.
Mary?
Yeah. So thanks for the presentations and the numbers, et cetera. I do want to say I, I think partly because the consolidation issue is, to me, it's going more slowly than I anticipated when the discussions first came up about doing this and closing a school. And I, I do have to say it's, it is not, it's a concern of mine. So there will be, you know, more children in the elementary schools, which, some of which are in dire need of maintenance, but nobody wants to do it now that they, some people think there is going to be a new school. So that's a kind of a problem for me. I, I want to say when I saw on, on page 21 of the budget book, that, you know, our precious youngest students in the early childhood center have a 38% special ed number. Some of them, that's higher than our 21% district number for the other schools. And some of them, I think, will be going to kindergarten along with this bump of students. And I am a little concerned because there's going to be fewer schools, you know. So, I mean, I didn't see precisely the numbers like per kindergarten classroom there will be next year in the remaining schools. But so that's one, I've just got this number. There's more students. There's also students with more needs. And the staffing is looking like it's kind of just about what we can get by with. Also, Wyndham Center School, we're not cutting off the utilities. I do understand everyone has been quite clear that as soon as we walk out the door, I guess, it's the town's responsibility. So that, but nobody is really fooled that there's not going to be any utility clause for that building because you can't just turn everything off from what I understand and have another vacant building in town. So those things are kind of weighing on me. I, I do think the budget looks is pretty, you know, at least we're asking for, you know, something. But I'm not sure we're going to have enough to help our new kindergarten students and to help with this kind of onerous move.
So if I could just respond to piece of it, I thank you for your comments.
And, and I'd like to say something.
Yeah. In terms of the kindergarten, we did, next year, there will be three more kindergarten classes and, and three more kindergarten pairs that are part of the projected staffing increases. And then always, and we actually did this last year, just so everyone's aware during the budget, we reduced some kindergartens because we had a lower amount, a, a, a lower enrollment. And during the year, what happened, we actually projected the right number of students. That was actually really close, but what we didn't anticipate was over the summer, we realized one of our schools had, the way it distributed was much higher. So we just, we did add a kindergarten. Whenever there's a enrollment increase and we see that, we, that to me is just standard operating procedure that you add a, a classroom to support the students. You don't have a classroom of 30 just because what your budget said, you have to adjust accordingly other places. Just, but I, I appreciate your greater point.
Thank you, Neil. Mary, I, I too am very concerned that people in the broader community don't understand what we need to support the education of the children that we have in this district, right? We don't choose the children that are in this district. They choose, they choose us, right? They come here, we have to, we have to take all comers. And I think we need to think very carefully as a board about how we as a full team need to make the case to the public to support our budget request. Because many, many people choose to think that they, they know what it takes to run a district and they think that, you know, there already have been people who have saying, saying that our budget request, as reported in the newspaper, which was misleading, is too much. But if you look at what the districts, other districts are asking for in this area and around the state, it's roughly what we're asking for. Some are a few are, are higher. There's only one that I've seen that's significantly lower. But it's going to be a tough budget year. And I think we need to do some education about what the law actually requires us to provide to the students in our district and that we cannot cut corners and that this budget request actually reflects our legal, moral, and ethical obligation to the schoolchildren in our district and the staff that work with them. And I really urge all of us, if we vote on this budget to go move forward, that we all need to work. We cannot count on, you know, a couple of presentations to the Board of Finance and, you know, articles in the paper that nobody, hardly anybody reads to get a budget referendum passed. We need to make the case. And that's our responsibility as Board of Ed members, I think, to do that. I just want to put that out there because I've heard a lot of people saying wacky things about what we, they think we should cut when they don't know that some of the things they're suggesting we cut, we actually legally cannot cut. So I really take what you said to heart, Mary. It's, it's going to be a tough budget year, I think, to make the, to get it voted on, right? Especially last year, we didn't have this kind of increase in our vote, our budget passed by 20 votes. So, I'm sorry. I'm sorry I went on my soapbox about it, but I, I really don't think it's going to be as easy a sell as it has been over the past few years. Katina?
Were you going to say something?
Yes. I, I also want to add in reference to the consolidation and Wyndham Center, I always saw them as two separate or dog contigious things. And on behalf of the ad hoc team, we have done, we have, the ad hoc team and our consultants have been right on time doing everything we have to do for, for submitting the paperwork to the state now in June, correct? So, and Wyndham Center was going to be closed because of its needs anyways. So I just want to clarify that those were two separate issues and that we're, I think, thinking of doing the decaying sewage pump as soon as possible in North Wyndham because it's just needed. And Wyndham Middle School also has been going through different projects, updating their classrooms as needed for the fifth graders to come in and the library media. So in terms of the capital improvements, there are people working on at least these two as priorities also. Am I correct? Yes. So just clarifying.
Any other questions, comments, discussion? People want to suggest changes, anything? I mean, this is the time to bring it up. Brendan, I saw you nodding your head when I was talking. Is there anything you want to say?
I was going to say, I completely agree that, you know, we need to put forth a budget that meets our moral obligations to educate our town's children. And I mean, when you look at this, there really is not any fluff to cut or anything like that. This is a pretty bare bones budget. Most of this is contractual increases that we can't really get around and really should be hired so we can attract and retain better staff. So I really think this is what we should be putting forward for and asking for, if not more, but I don't think that's feasible. So I think we should move forward with this.
Mark?
Yeah, I, I certainly agree with your assessment. This is going to be a very tough budget year. I think it is definitely going to be a tough year through the Board of Finance. I'm willing to vote for the 5.8, though. My caveat is I think administration should be looking at two to three points reduction as to, you know, start looking now as to where you might find, I, I just anticipated that we're not going to get the full 5.8, that we should be prepared at least at some level as to what would you have to do to get this below 5.8. Not said, I'm supporting the 5.8. I'll campaign for the 5.8. But I think we need to have, I want to be aware of the administration that it may be necessary to, to do that so you're not caught in the last minute.
I, I might flip that a little, Mark. Just as a suggestion, I think, you know, I think, I appreciate that people have said they agree, we need to fight for 5.8. And I would make the case that we need to be very clear when we present our budget to the Board of Finance about what is non-negotiable, right? And if you ask, you know, we often get that question. Well, what if we cut it down three points? What, what does that mean? What are you going to cut? Whatever. I think we should not respond to it by saying what we are going to cut. I think we should respond to it by saying, what are our children not going to get? Right? Like what programs, what experiences, what, what things will our children not get? Not how many people will be cut, but what they will miss out on because of, because of a decreased budget.
I, I agree. I've lived through a number of these and that's a trick question. Every, the Board of Finance loves to ask that question, what will be cut? And as soon as we say anything's going to be cut, then they turn around back on us. That's a threat. You know, you're, you're going to cut out the sports. They, they turn it, so I, I hated answering that question because it, it, it doesn't make sense. I agree, we need to fight for that. My point was only, I didn't want the administration to wait, think it's going to happen and then, and then find out that they cut it and then only have two days to respond or something. I'm just suggesting that the administration had some, I don't want to, I don't want to bring this up to the Board of Finance. I don't want to say we'll cut 12 teachers, we'll cut 14 classrooms, we'll reduce sports at the middle school. I don't want to go to that, that route because that's just, there's no benefit there.
I found it interesting that when we were doing the public forums on the proposed elementary school consolidation, one of the questions that kept on coming up was how many children in a classroom, right? I think, you know, when we're talking about what our goals are for, for our Board of Education and the educational experience of the students in our classrooms, we should be proudly talking about our goals of trying not to have classrooms that are over x size, whatever, because there's been a lot of assumption in some of those questions that have been brought up in the forums, that we're going to overcrowd classrooms. And so just some people have made that assumption, that it's going to mean you're going to have like 27 children in a classroom. And I think we need to talk about those, what our goals are in this budget for classroom size too and things like that. Those are the kinds of things that members of the general public understand, I think. I'm sorry, I'm all hepped up about this, but.
I do think the classroom size point is very important. And so even previous under the, when Superintendent Youngberg was pitching any of this, and now, whenever I do projections, to me, we are not increasing class sizes. What happens is, we even do, one of the scenarios I continue to run is, obviously, this is a fictional thing because a, a school can't be built instantaneously. But if there was a, a K to four school built right now, what would it look like? And what you see is just in it, the number of classrooms are projected the same and you just see a more evenly distributed number. And you don't have the, one school has 16, one has 24, but we don't reduce. The only time, like I mentioned before, actually in, in Mary's question about kindergarten, is the only time you would add or reduce is if you have, like, and that's something the board can decide. When classes get below this, you would consider, or if classes get above this, you would consider and have some sort of working guidance. That discussion could influence, you know, what we do. But like, that has been our, our practice, not to just, oh, we're, we're collapsing these. Like when we've reduced classrooms, it's because in one case, three years ago, we had two classes, just out of students leaving. That wasn't the case of the beginning of the year. They had a class of nine and eight, for example. And that like was in a very unusual circumstance. That's when you consider it. Not, not because you're building the new school. That's not the purpose of the new school. It's to actually, as we've mentioned, increase offerings. And I think the greater point we have to sell that is, is taken by me.
I have a question. Anybody else? I'll call Ildum.
Yes, hi.
Hi.
So I think it's going to be a little difficult to sell to the public only because we're closing Wyndham Center School. And so people are going to say, well, if you're saving money there, why do you need this 5.8%? So I suggest we have like a brief outline of what the cost increase is. That way, like a one sheet paper that we can pass out or send home with the kids. So everybody has a breakdown of what the increase is. So they understand and they support us, hopefully.
Well, in past years, we've had a one cheater on what the budget means and we can do that again in Spanish and English.
Yeah.
Not just for the parents, but for the voters in general.
Yeah, that's a good idea. And we have to keep saying the kids are going to be in the other schools. You know, it's not like we're, the kids are disappearing and we need the staff and life is more expensive. You know, the end.
Yeah, I'm sure now everybody in the community, everybody in the world knows, everything's gone up.
Right, right.
But unfortunately, some don't want to support the schools. So we got to make up-
Well, we're going to need to talk to people.
Yes.
One thought that I had was we might, the Board of Ed might want to offer some online budget sessions that just sort of give people from the community the chance to get online and we do a presentation.
That's a great idea.
Like we did for the community forum that we did two, two weeks ago or whatever. Because if we count on just word of mouth, it's going to be hard to get the message out.
Yes, exactly.
Mark?
Yeah, just, just so I can get in on Lynn's bandwagon with, with lecturing and teaching. I can be your TA for a second. I think we need to also recall, we've gone to the Board of Finance at least three times this year to let them know we're going to be $500,000 short because of that grand shortfall. And their response always has been, oh, you'll get the money somewhere. You got a $54,000, $54 million budget, you can find $500,000. There is this overwhelming belief on that board that we have money hidden in the basement somewhere. I think we need to keep that in mind. Also, the other thing I would say, keep in mind is, the child, number of children in the classroom, and that is, is very appealing. But again, I, I believe, in my experience has been, the Board of Finance attitude is more, well, we're not talking about them, we're talking about the administration. You guys got too many administrators in that system. So we have to be prepared of what, what they're thinking about. And that, not as well as what we want to put forth, just when you're talking to them. So we have to be prepared of what, what they're thinking about, and that, not as well as what we want to put forth, just when you're talking to them.
Anybody have any other comments, questions? Okay. We've already run through the capital improvements, right? We talked-
Yes, and if you want, if you have any questions or want me to explain anything-
Did anybody have any questions on the capital improvements that we talked about at the last workshop and that Neil had a slide on in this? Okay, so we're on to action. I would entertain a motion on what, not the superintendent's recommended budget, entertain a motion on the budget that the board wants to recommend, because the next iteration of the budget book is the board's budget, not the superintendent's budget.
Don't move.
No offense. Somebody needs to make a motion with the percentage amount.
I make a motion, we accept the 5.8% increase as requested by the board.
Well, it was requested by the superintendent that the board approved the 5.8% increase. Ilda, how's that sound?
Get it.
That's the motion that Ilda's put on the table to approve a 5.8% increase. Somebody want to second that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Brendan. Up for discussion. I would just like to make the caveat that we may need to make an addendum to that budget next Wednesday based on any changes that could happen between now and then. Okay, all those in favor of moving forward with a budget to take to the town, to the Board of Finance in the town, and the voters eventually of 5.8%? Raise your hand. It's a divided board. It's unanimous. Thank you. And then I would entertain, thank you, thank you, thank you. That's great. Thank you, board. I would entertain a motion to approve a capital improvement budget of, what's the dollar amount on the capital improvement budget? It's in the slide presentation. Oh, it's not totaled.
I think it was in the previous presentation. Go ahead.
Brendan's adding it up. I would entertain a motion to approve a $1,276?
67.
67,000, $1,267,000 capital improvement budget.
So moved?
Motion made by Brendan.
Second.
Seconded by Ilda. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. It's unanimous. Thank you, everybody. I would entertain a motion to adjourn at 8:10.
I move, we move.
Meeting adjourned.
Good night, everybody.